Oh, no.
Senior Administrator Report.
Thank you. My machine is giving me an unseen gesture here.
We're gonna give you the paper back.
Matter of fact, I thought that.
You should say Administrator.
Okay. Council Mayor, citizens. It sounds like a reoccurring theme as I report each month, but it's something that takes a while. In regards to the asset and property, the city attorney is still on track to try and have the foreclosure process complete for where we can do something with the property either right around the end of July, first week of August, or it will be put up for auction. So they're in progress and they're still working on that. In regards to the surety bond, just awaiting response from the bond company. So that's where we're in the waiting stage at this point. I want to touch on the website project that Council Slavin is gonna work on and what she has put together is fantastic.
And that's my part of my report.
Well, it's just what I'm gonna touch on is it's gonna go now towards staff. Anyway, so what I'm gonna be doing with her report at this point, and I know you go at the speed of a speeding bullet and I go more like a snail.
No, I'm fine. This is not.
So anyway, I'm taking her report and I sent it to Jackie and Susan because they're the ones who are gonna primarily have to work with whatever a decision is made in regards to the website. So give them about a week review, give their comments, and then I'll come back to Council Slavin at that point and then package something up for the council. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Six point two, City Recorder Financial Report.
All right, I have. Please, Counselor. May I, Counselor? This is a little abbreviated version of the cash. I had to change to LCC to attend the budget in communities or the budgets classes that the DOR put on today, and I did not get back until late. So the Sufa Valley Bank, the outstanding checks, I don't know whether or not Tina did any checks today, and so then they weren't actually posted into our general, into the general ledger. She doesn't do that part. She doesn't send them over. And so the Sufa Valley Bank, the amount in it is, does not reflect any outstanding checks at this point. So the balance in the Saiso General account is $615,235.13. The Saver Grant account is at $38,917.2. The ambulance account is $76,322.72. The municipal court account is $55,955.17 for a total available cash. Oh, I forgot to change the date this evening. Sorry about that. The LGIP account has $258,924. The statement from the LGIP is on the back of this. You can take a look. It shows that we had interest last month of $108, and then there's a monthly maintenance fee that they do charge is about $10, and that shows there was no other transactions during last month for the LGIP. We were asked for an update on the millionaire money. The checks on that have basically been dispersed in January. A volunteer came in and actually tried to contact everybody who did not come in to pick up their checks. That was fairly successful and a lot of people did come in. There were some people that we didn't get a response back. If there was message phones, messages were left. At this point, that account, we had one check that cleared during February, and at this point, that account now will be kind of frozen per se. We're anticipating that no other checks will clear, and I'm gonna go back and see if we have anything else outstanding. I've contacted the trust company and asked them about the, you know, what we can legally do or what they will allow us to do with any money in funds in that account, and I'm waiting to receive an email back from them. I talked to Karen on Monday. She was gonna email me. She said that the people involved in this didn't have any issues with it, that I want some written documentation before we proceed further. That's why I don't have it to present to you yet, because I'm waiting for a piece of paper in my hand, because that makes it more official. Other than that, continuing to work and doing the reconciliation and just trying to keep things moving forward and not falling back behind.
I have a question on the ambulance account. Is that from their fees or is that money left over from the 20 million?
No, that is fees. That's the money that comes in. It's for their accounting. It just kind of keeps it separate. You can move it in, but it kind of gives an accounting for them so they can make sure once Springfield sends the money, those indirect deposits that are made, that it wasn't that.
Yes, sir.
Does that money that we moved into the ambulance account?
This money? No, it's money that's from fees that we see.
Remember we moved the money, what, from April or something like that into the ambulance?
Oh, you mean the transfer.
Oh, the transfer? Actually, I'm waiting. I have the papers filed on the mayor's side at last. I'm waiting for Louie because I'm not to actually move that money from the attorney over. I thought you wanted to wait until the supplemental budget.
Why don't you just bring it over and put it in the bank?
I mean, will that show on this or will that just go directly to what's paying for that?
No, those transfers will show up on your actual financials, on the financials. But yes, that account, yes, once she finalizes all the donor money, okay, yes, that will be reflected on here on any money that is left, yes. At this time, it is not reflected, but it will be.
It will actually go back in, and the money that was spent to pay for the ambulance will actually go back into the general account because that's where it was expensed out of. It will go into that line, and it'll actually show up on the financials being in the EMS fund.
I have a question here on this. Does any chance of money, if you don't, are you gonna return the money instead of, that's what happened?
And no, what we're getting at this time verbally is that the donor has said that they will allow the city to use the money as the city sees fit, and primarily that would be to try and do community-type events. So basically, they're gonna, I believe the email's gonna put it at the discretion of the city on how to use the money, but primarily they would prefer that it be used for the community as a whole, as needed.
The reason I'm saying that, you know, we've got thought problems here, and I wonder if you'd like to mention it. Are you trying to get another call?
Yes, we're at, in the steps of infancy of working on a federally qualified health clinic. So I am working on that, and I will be drawing people, more people in as I get the initial steps going on. So that is something that we're working on.
That's something that you can spend that money on?
That's gonna, that's gonna be up to the council. It's basically the donor has said that it's gonna be up to the council, and we'll present a format to council with suggestions, possibly suggestions from the community on how to use it, those kind of things when we get there. But ultimately, it's gonna be up to you on what you do with it.
I might answer some of that. That's part of the strategic plan. Medical, transportation, infrastructure, all those pieces of the strategic plan, so you don't lose track of what you're doing. And that's a good question you had there, Your Honor. And that's already been, I've already approached a national elected official and a state elected official concerning that very thing, and that and our highway project. So I think that at least we made enough noise that they're aware that we're working on something.
Yes.
All righty then. Adopt the, six point three, adopt the fiscal year 1314 budget calendar. We find that page fifteen in here.
Page sixteen.
We have a hard copy.
Yeah, and then the calendar would be page sixteen. That is the proposed budget calendar for FY 1314.
I might add, these usually aren't, they usually don't stay in place. They change several times.
And it could change several times, yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adopt the year 1314 budget calendar.
Got it. Moved by Council, course decided by Council Coe to adopt the 1314 budget calendar. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote.
Counselor Biggerstaff?
Aye.
Mayor Shory?
Aye.
Counselor Slavin?
Aye.
Counselor Fortune?
Aye.
Counselor Coe?
Aye.
Counselor Basler?
Aye.
Counselor Clark?
Aye.
I'm most curious. I do have one comment.
Yes, Your Honor.
When do you anticipate, oh, there they are. I think you'll notice on April 4th that we'll be appointing budget committee members. Is that our first meeting in April?
That's correct.
Have we got any candidates yet?
We have one, two, three. All right, so.
Three of these spots.
So, so, so yes, I went with April 4th for selection, but that's April.
Six point four, amendment to the LCSO dispatch contract.
Counsel, as you can see, the original contract expired February the 28th. So we're still running, of course, you know, normally if there's no real change, the contract will continue to run. So basically, what you're doing is extending the previous contract to August 15th, 2013. And we do have a two-year commitment with these folks. So you will see probably in August or September to take us all the way through to June 30th and the 14th. Basically, they're just taking us through another six months quarterly, so they're keeping their quarterly implements. No change, no change in the amount. It's continuing with the same amount. It's usually, it's $2,500. Now, it's quarterly, it's supposed to be $7,500. No, that's correct. $7,500 per month is $98. Yeah, that is correct. That is correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Does that contract provide for the narrowband services? Because I was at the public safety meeting last time, and apparently they don't have the radios set up yet for that, so we're still doing it through phone lines?
Correct.
So are they not fulfilling their end of the bargain?
Well, no, no, the phone lines and all that is part of the original contract. That was, that was how we agreed to set it up from the beginning. And so, and the goal is, as you have on your report, the goal is to purchase the radios needed in the future so that we are able to communicate over the air instead of the phone lines. And at this time, though, it still functions. It's functioning well, even though they are not narrowband.
And we aren't going to face any sort of federal issues with that?
No, no, we're good. No, we're good.
They might?
They might, but we won't, because all our stuff has been narrowbanding.
Was there something here about we're gonna pay, we're gonna buy the radio for a $2,000?
That's correct. So the radios that we would be talking to them would be our radios. We would have to purchase them, and normal cost for those radios is between $11,500 and $14,000. So what we're looking at is a couple of used radios that they have available at a couple thousand apiece. So we're saying about $20,000.
Just the big picture, and I realize this is weird, but we talked at one time, we were going to move this council meeting to the WAC Center so more people could be there, and eventually move more of the city offices to the WAC Center instead of local. So we can put more jail spaces in this building here.
That would be a goal, yes.
So we can pay for full-time staff and try to get our own dispatch back. What is the timeline on this? And one of the reasons I ask this is because there's so much work to do with that WAC Center as far as the building itself that if this is like a long-term, a 10-year goal, that the building in the last 10 years. And like I said, this is a big portion of conversation. Maybe this isn't the time to have it. If it isn't, then say so and shut up.
Well, and we did have this, there were some discussions about the WAC earlier this evening with the mayor and the city engineer and talking about grants and those kind of things. So I guess it would fall right back to the strategic plan on, to see if the WAC is one of those items that you're gonna wanna put on there in your five-year plan or not. So that would be one of the issues right there. And it's gonna be a pretty major discussion about bringing back dispatch, those kind of things. And that's, that's way down the road if we were even able to do that again.
Counselor Coe? Has the, giving the dispatch over to the sheriffs proven to be very profitable for us? Is it profitable? Are we making money? Are we saving money? Is it, what's the financial outcome?
What we're seeing right now is because of all the layoffs and everything and outsourcing of the dispatch, if we didn't have any negative fund balance to deal with, well, actually, even with a negative fund balance, you're running at about three, are we still about $300,000 to the building? We're running about $300,000 to the good steel right now, even with a negative fund balance in your general fund, which you never have done before.
That doesn't answer my question about dispatch. Is dispatch more profitable for us to have or to sub out?
Oh, no, no, to sub out.
Okay.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's right. And that 300 is probably most of your dispatch operation.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the mayor sign the amendment for dispatch services from the Lane County Sheriff's Office.
For a second.
A second.
Moved by Counselor Clark, headed by Counselor Christine, to sub out, to sign on. Right for the discussion. Hearing none, call for vote.
Counselor Clark?
Aye.
Mayor Shory?
Aye.
Counselor Coe?
Aye.
Counselor Basler?
Aye.
Counselor Biggerstaff? Counselor Slavin?
Aye.
Counselor Fortune?
Aye.
Most curious. Six point five, lease agreement with a seventh-day fellowship.
Counsel, what you have in front of you is, and we haven't done this much, but basically we've gotta work outside the box because we don't have a whole lot of money to maintain the WAC. So we have a small group that would like to rent room three for their weekly meetings, and part of that would be that one of their members, which is a licensed contractor, is willing to give us four hours a month to do maintenance as our public works supervisor would guide and direct, okay? And one of the first things we would ask him to do is to continue to patch some more stuff on the roof if we can. So that's the first, that would be the first task. And I asked him if he was comfortable with that, and he said he's been business about 35 years, so he felt comfortable doing that. And again, this isn't something we've done in the past, but I feel that it would be to our benefit to have someone like that that could assist us in the WAC. And as I said, Chuck Kernig would be directing his work. And he did present his bond and all that other stuff. So and his license and those things.
Would this, so he would be doing maintenance over the whole building, not just specific to the rooms they're renting?
That's correct. It just, that's correct. As it says on the first line, "I have been proposed to perform the labor to do the maintenance and eliminate activity centers to the best of my ability." So that building, yes, not just this.
And what happens if he falls off the roof and dies? What's our line? Not for bad. It's him. We don't have any sort of.
Yeah, he's bonded. So he brought me his license and his bond, his bonding and the whole bit.
Can I jump in there? He's bonded to what level? 5,000 bucks? It's what the state requires?
It appear.
It really depends on what kind of contractor he is.
Right.
Yeah.
But most of them, it's 5,000 bucks, I think.
If he's a general contractor, it should be 20 if he's.
I think, I think I saw a number like 20.
Which means he'd be a general contractor.
And if he's, if he's doing a number of different things, he'd have to be a general contractor to handle his classification.
He's a general contractor.
You got the deep pockets.
Counselor Biggerstaff?
Well, here again, the big picture now. What are we gonna do with the WAC? Are we gonna keep the WAC or are we gonna get rid of the WAC? What are we gonna do with the WAC?
I can answer that for you, since you brought it up twice. We, at this point in time, are going to keep the WAC. The reason we're going to keep the WAC is because at one point, we were going to tear the WAC down, but we were told that there was asbestos problem. There is some feeling that that asbestos problem's been abated, but we haven't been able to find the documentation of that at the moment. So if it hasn't been, we're better off not doing anything with it other than remodeling it, which we can do. And the feeling is, generally speaking, that the building has value if we get some grants. So our process is to go after CDVG grants and see if we can get grants to bring that building back up to, back up to worship, which would probably be around a million dollars. Yes.
My question would be that since last year, it was a council decision to put it up for sale, would it need to be a council decision to, whether or not to keep it then?
It was put up for sale, but we didn't realize, but nobody's gonna buy it with an asbestos problem, with that kind of a thing. So it almost automatically falls back into the council's arms. And the consensus that I've heard from the council, maybe I didn't hear all of them, but obviously I didn't. Yes, sir.
Once again, if we don't have, I mean, do we, do we know that there's an asbestos problem? I mean, other than the knowing that underneath the vinyl was there.
It's also a pipe.
There are some pipes that I was told that I still learn to do handling.
And you have boiler wrapped in asbestos.
That's right.
There's asbestos.
Any type of, any type of major remodeling that that place is gonna have to have an asbestos abatement period accidentally.
That's a point of inspection.
I would ask the question of our city engineer, since he's here. What's the, do you think it's more valuable to tear it down, to rebuild something with grant money, or to fix what we have? Considering the mitigation that we have to go through.
Well, let me make a few clarifications. I actually did last year, I don't know, two years ago, did a pretty extensive cost estimate on refurbishing the WAC with a local contractor, Essex Construction. If I remember correctly, I think it came in around 1.2 million to get that building back online, so it could be a valuable asset for the city. Without knowing the cost of asbestos abatement, asbestos abatement these days is, people know how to do it. They've been doing it a long time. It's not that big a deal. It's always better to knock things down and start over. That being said, you know, it's just, it's always cheaper. There's a number of funding agencies, and specifically the one that the mayor mentioned, CDVG, that would look at funding, you know, refurbishing the building to keep it in place. I mean, it's a, it's a good building. It does have value. And so, you know, if you could get a grant, grant funds, and you're gonna nail very quickly whether or not you can get grant funds, then it would be worth, I think, refurbishing. But if you can't, then it's a different animal, and, you know, you would look at what is the property worth minus the cost of demolition. That would be my opinion.
Couldn't we get an asbestos inspection for that?
Couldn't we get one?
Well, your city engineer's a little embarrassed to say that I think there is an estimate in my work about asbestos abatement. I just can't remember how much it costs.
He knew asbestos he could. There hasn't been a final decision made because we have some. Thanks for the question, by the way.
I was just gonna point out, my husband works for an asbestos removal company. I could find out how much it would cost to have an estimate done, and they come up here all the time. They're from Harrisburg.
Between 6 and 12.
Yeah, that wouldn't hurt as long as it doesn't.
6 and 12. Asbestos test and everything to that.
So that's where that one stands. And right now, the roof leaks, and the gentleman that we approved tonight is gonna see if he can fix the roof.
Well, at least patch it and slow down the water.
I have a question.
Counselor Clark?
Why is he only doing part of it for the part of the rent instead of doing all of it?
So I need money for utilities, Counselor, so that $75 a month cash helps cover utilities down there, just why I want some of it.
All I did was thinking that'd be three more hours.
Counselor Coe?
Is this person from California? Because I'm looking at the wages here at $41 an hour, and I don't know anybody around here that makes $41 an hour as a contractor, but I'm about to, I sure don't.
Well, what's a reasonable rate?
Well, I mean, 30 to 35, I would say, but 41, I think, is too high. I mean, he'd have to be an extremely qualified person, craftsman, to be able to achieve that rate around here. Is that, Counselor, is that, you say for a public works project?
If it's over $50,000, then you, you have to pay boldly wage rates, and you would start at around 50, just for carpentry.
No, so.
But if it's under, then you pay.
So it's 41 in the ballpark?
What was the, what was the wage again?
41 per hour, for four hours a month, that $41 per hour, general contracting.
You know, I would just ask a local.
Yeah, okay. It depends on whether, I mean, you can't work four hours a month. I mean, you're gonna work, I mean, at four hours a month, you're gonna work nothing or you're gonna work 20 hours a month. I mean, it takes four hours, but your tools are out, so I can't believe it.
Well, I tell you, I'm not a roach in speak.
Tomorrow, what's it gonna take to get those tools out?
But you got two hours to set up and tear down.
But basically, what we're getting is the same amount of rent that we're already getting, and he's gonna work on it for free. I mean.
Yeah. And just like Counselor Biggerstaff, if we push rat patches on the roof and keep some water out, we may get another five years of going.
We don't lose anything in this, and we gain something.
I agree.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Where is this playing in regarding the WAC and our whole strategic planning session? I would think that that would be part of it, really what we see happening.
Yes.
And how far down the road are we? Are we gonna be here next year talking about strategic planning?
No.
March or not?
No. Nope, I believe that we should be starting your strategic plan during the month of April. I'll give you guys a date, so starting in April. of April. I'll give you guys a date, so, starting in April.